Good afternoon, welcome to Woodstock City Council. It is Thursday, February the 4th, 2021. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section 238 subsection 3.3 of the municipal act. And section. Uh, let's see, section 16.6.24 of the city of Woodstock procedural bylaw. This meeting is being live streamed on the city's YouTube channel and a recording of this meeting will also be posted on the city website following the meeting. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the agendas, meetings and minutes page of the city website. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of the webcam when moving a motion requesting to speak and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they're requested to inform the clerk. And with that, I would ask all of the councillors to turn on their webcams. Welcome, everybody. And any disclosure of pecuniary interest, councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, councillor Mark Schadner declare a conflict for myself as I am a part-time employee of Kendall Cab. And possess the tax license in the city of Woodstock, so that's pertaining to item F1. The taxi by law amendment proposed by the Clerk's Office of the City of Woodstock.
Thank you. Any further conflicts of interest? Seeing none, disclosure of new business? Matters arising from the minutes? Then we'll have the minutes from our meeting, January 14th, 2021, councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, I make a motion at the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on January the 14th, 2021, be adopted, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Connie Lauder.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And our next item is the adoption of the agenda with an addition and we have uh, an additional report under F3. Uh, look for consensus on council, councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, I make a motion and seconded by Connie Lauder that the following item be added to the agenda. It's a department report F3 zoning by law amendment appeal. That in dash eight dash 20 dash 22 pertaining to 919 Sloan Street.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And we have no presentations or delegations today. But we have correspondence and our first item of correspondence is a request by councillor Lauder regarding a resolution from the town of Bracebridge. Uh, councillor Lauder?
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council supports resolution, resolution number 21 dash GC dash O24 received from the town of Bracebridge. Requesting the federal and provincial governments to provide immediate, broad and substantial municipal funding opportunities for well-planned shovel-ready projects already prioritized. Under municipal asset management plans to provide immediate stimulus to the local provincial and federal economies. In order to rebound from the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. And further that this resolution be circulated to the town of Bracebridge. The right Honorable Justin Trudeau, Prime Minister of Canada, the Honorable Catherine McKinney, Minister of Infrastructure and Communities of Canada. The Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Peter, uh, Beth, Beth Lenovee. Minister of Finance of Ontario, the Honorable Laurie Scott, Minister of Infrastructure of Ontario, the Honorable Steve Clark. Minister of the Municipal Affairs and House of Ontario, the Honorable Dave McKenzie, Oxford MP, the Honorable Ernie Hardman. Oxford MPP, the Association of Municipalities Ontario and the Federation of Canada Municipalities.
Thank you. And a seconder councillor Tate, uh, discussion councillor Lauder?
Yes, could I, um, through the mayor to our CIO David Currie, um, just speak to this resolution, why, um, I brought this forward?
Yes, your worship through to councillor Lauder. Um, I, I firmly support the, uh, the resolution that's before council. Um, the municipalities, uh, always struggle to, to find financing for, um, the replacement of their older assets. Uh, many of our newer assets can find funding and financing through development charges for growth-related items. But when it comes to our older assets that we've maintained for decades and decades that simply need replacement. It always represents a difficulty in finding the funds, uh, to, to make those replacements. Um, and in that regard, I fully support the Bracebridge resolution. Uh, the city itself has, uh, has a few, uh, facilities that we would have on a list, uh, for shovel-ready status to move forward with. And would welcome that, that funding in order to bring that to a reality.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And our next item of correspondence is from the Woodstock Hospital Foundation regarding the 50/50. And we'll go with councillor Talbot and a seconder will be councillor Tate.
Thank you, worship. I'll move that Woodstock City Council supports the Woodstock Hospital Foundation's request for temporary advertising signage. At the following locations until April 30th, 2021. Southside Park, Highway 59 and Juliana Drive, downtown Woodstock, Devonshire Avenue and County Road 4. Van Sitterd Avenue and County Road 17, Van Sitterd Avenue and Ingersoll Ave, Van Sitterd Avenue and Devonshire Ave. Parkinson Road and Oxford Road 4, Parkinson Road and Baird's Lane, Highway 2 and Highway 55. Mill Street and Clark Street, or Clark Road, sorry, and Standard 2 Park.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries and another good fundraising initiative, uh, in the community. With slight changes from some of the previous things that they've been able to offer, of course, due to the COVID, so, uh, and, uh, hear that, uh, the first draw winner was very, very pleased, so, uh, let's see, next up we have our dedicated gas tax funding, a slight increase, councillor Tate and the seconder councillor Accioni.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council refer the report regarding 2020, 2021 dedicated gas tax funding for public transportation to the bylaws section of the agenda.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And our next one is amendments to the traffic bylaw. And we'll go councillor Accioni and the seconder will be councillor Lauder?
Yes, moved by myself, the Woodstock City Council refer the report regarding amendments to traffic bylaw number 8021 dash 04 to the bylaws section of the agenda.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, oh councillor Schadenberg, go ahead.
And I'm sure an executor referred this question to, but, uh, part of the report has to do with, with, uh, ticketing cars along side streets and whatnot, brings no events or non-snow events. I just wanted to know if there was a, a general consensus from, I guess I'm not sure who would, who'd be the best answer to the question about any problems that we were actually having this year, um, with, uh, with said, um, idea.
Your worship through the councillor, um, the bylaw department is, is in charge of, of, um, ticketing for, for over the winter months for, for cars that park overnight. Um, on the side of the road, uh, we do do the occasional blitzes. Um, I can't say it's been any worse this year or any better this year. It's a typical, been a typical year. Usually people forget about it at the beginning and then slowly, um, get back into their, um, learn the proper way to do, treat it again. Um, that being said, you know, luckily enough, we haven't had that much snow yet this winter, so it hasn't been that big of an issue, but, uh, yeah, you know, we, uh, our bylaw guys are going out in the middle of the night and on weekends to, uh, to check, to check occasionally.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And with some of those changes, you'll see, uh, new signs go up, uh, changing some of the no parking areas around intersections and some of the new streets in the community as well. And, uh, thanks for that question. Just a reminder to everybody to make it easier for the snow clearing, uh, stay off the street parking, uh, at night and, uh, you'll avoid those pesky tickets and fines. Uh, our next item on the agenda is, uh, of course, uh, continued good news for the friendly city. This is the 2020 annual building report. We've had six years now of strong growth and, uh, a lot of those, uh, items on the building report, of course, are new opportunities and jobs for people in our community as well as new homes and apartments and, uh, looking for a mover and a seconder on that, uh, we'll go move by councillor Lauder and seconded by councillor Accioni. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council received the 2020 annual building report as information.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And next up, some, uh, repair work for the Southside Pool Basin, uh, sole source painting project, councillor Schadenberg and seconded by councillor Tate. Thank you.
Yeah, I make a motion that the Woodstock City Council approves awarding the single source contract to remove previous epoxy paint and to repaint the basin of Southside Aquatic Center. And a contract to grant Hodges and Sons Painters in the amount of $58,050.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, just hoping to get a comment maybe from, uh, Brian Connors or Director of Parks and Recreation on, on the necessity for this, uh, for this project. And if anything, it's good timing to be able to get the work done now.
Um, thank you, your worship, through to the councillor's question. Um, yes, it is, uh, um, a good time to, to do this project. Um, if, uh, if we can get it done now, if not, we'll, uh, i- if the return happens a little earlier, we'll get it done, uh, later in the year. But what, uh, we're asking for is, um, a sole source contract. We've, uh, used this contractor to do a test patch, um, of the, the concrete and the paint and it is held for over a year. And, uh, painting pool, concrete pool bottoms is a pretty much hit or miss, um, opportunity and, uh, right now we've, we've found a contractor and a painting, uh, mixture that, uh, that, that will adhere.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And the next is the outdoor sports field and rain field closure amendment. Uh, councillor Talbot and seconded by councillor Lauder. Thank you.
I'll move that Woodstock Council approved council policy PR 013, outdoor sports field rain field closure as amended.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor Lauder?
Yes, I would like to ask through the mayor to Mr. Connors, could you just comment on that for, uh, the public out there listening to this?
Uh, your worship through to the councillor's question, uh, this is just, um, a, a policy change within the outdoor sports field, uh, rain fi- uh, field closure. Um, it's really just a, an administrative change. Um, this has more to do with, um, when this policy was first enacted. Um, the Woodstock Soccer Club, uh, owned and managed, um, sorry, not owned, but managed the, uh, sports field, uh, at Cowan Park. So they were involved with the communication once that was closed. Now they're not, um, we will be, um, dealing with the entire communication tree of the renters. So, um, that's really the, the only change to the policy.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, let's hope that, uh, as things progress, those fields get more use this year in 2021. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And next up, we have the proposed purchase of 486 and 488 Dundas Street, the former, uh, Zabians property next to City Hall on Dundas. Uh, councillor Talbot and seconded by councillor Accioni.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve the purchase of 486, 488 Dundas Street based on a price of 775,000 and that the necessarily necessary bylaw be read. And further that the purchase 486, 488 Dundas Street be financed by debenture.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And next on the agenda, we have, uh, the Juliana Drive, the former site of the old golf course, more money for completing studies, councillor Tate and a seconder councillor Lauder.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approve an addition of $80,000 to the budget already approved to carry out the necessary studies associated with the rezoning of 760 Juliana Drive. And further that the additional funds be financed out of the reserve for capital projects.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor Lauder?
Thank you. Um, I would just ask, um, Mr. Hammond, if he would like to speak to this. I know that I've had questions on what's happening there and I know this has come up before, but just kind of refresh people's memories of, uh, of what, uh, we hope to gain on this property.
Uh, thank you, your worship, through to councillor Lauder. Uh, essentially, the land as it sits right now is zoned open space, which was, uh, compatible with the golf course that's there. Uh, now, now that we're left with some surplus land, uh, out of the entire golf course area, I think it's important to point out that it's about six and a half acres. Um, which is just a fraction of what we've set on the, the south side or the east side, so, so second east, uh, east side of Juliana rather. Uh, got my compass from around there. Um, anyway, so there's about six and a half acres. It's got development potential. It sits above the floodland, floodline or either. Uh, and could be developed for a higher and better use than the open space that's there. So there, there will be a portion of land that stays as open space for, uh, public trails or what have you. Anyway, in order to take it from open space to, uh, residential development, hopefully, high density residential development. There's, uh, a long list of studies that we need to go through and these are the types of studies that we would ask for the private sector as well. So we're holding ourselves to the same standards. Um, our goal at the end of the day is to have the property, uh, designated and rezoned to be compatible with high density residential development on that site. Uh, it was to council, uh, a number of months ago and asked for $50,000 to conduct the studies. We thought that was gonna be sufficient at the time. Um, as we got into it, there were a few surprises, nothing, no deal breakers, but, uh, anyway, it became evident that we're gonna require more money to complete the studies to, uh, essentially remove all of the unknowns, um, when we go to sell the property to, uh, hopefully a private developer. Sorry, that's kind of a long-winded answer, but, uh, anyway, our goal by spending the mon- money is to increase the value of the land. Uh, the budget that I've asked for is, uh, about $130,000 total. So the money I'm asking for today plus what was asked, asked for previously. Essentially to cover those costs, we need to get about $20,000 per acre. More out of the land than we would as op- as open space. And, and there's no doubt in my mind that, uh, we'll, we'll go well beyond that.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And next up, we have the extension to the pop-up patio pilot program that we had in effect for, uh, local business. Um, we'll go councillor Tate and seconded by councillor, uh, Schadenberg.
I'll move the motion that Woodstock City Council authorize the extension of the city's pop-up patio program for an additional two years for further evaluation. And further that the city relax its requirements for other outdoor patios as it relates to parking and site plane, plan as described in the report.
Thank you. Uh, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And for any of the people watching this right now that would like more information about the pop-up patios, contact the Clerk's Department and they'll help steer you through the process and, uh, get you ready for spring. Uh, next item is the taxi by law, the vulnerable sector check requirements and, uh, update that'll happen on the, the bylaws section if approved. And, uh, we'll go for a mover of councillor Lauder and seconder will be councillor Talbot.
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council refer the report regarding taxi by law, vulnerable sector check requirements to the bylaws section of the agenda.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And councillor Schadenberg, you'll be able to tune back in again. And there we are. Next item on the agenda is the Planning Committee of Adjustment, Delegation of Authority. We'll go councillor Talbot and a seconder, uh, councillor Schadenberg. Thank you.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council authorize the staff be temporarily delegated the authority to cancel and schedule planning meetings and committee of adjustment meetings under the Planning Act 1990 until August 30th, 2021.
Thank you. You, uh, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all, uh, is that for discussion? Okay, councillor Schadenberg?
I guess just wanted to state while we're, uh, while we're talking about this at a city council meeting that I've hosted, uh, or chaired the last few, uh, planning meetings. I just wanted to sort of give everyone sort of the encouragement that if they've got a comment they'd like to make on something at a planning meeting. And they're afraid to come on Zoom or afraid to sit here on a cell phone even and blindly participate. By all means, they can, they can write a six, seven, eight paragraph story about what they feel about a topic and get that submitted and it will be attached to, to our agenda. People always are afraid of these public meetings and participating and said, I'm just want to encourage people to go ahead and participate, uh, through written word, not where they can, uh, encapsulize all the words to the way they want to.
Thank you for that encouragement, uh, further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And next up, we have the zoning by law amendment for the appeal at, uh, 919 Sloan Street, councillor Tate and the seconder councillor Talbot.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council supports the decision to refuse to amend the zoning by law with respect to application ZN8 dash 20 dash 22, 919 Sloan Street. And further that the city clerk be instructed to so advise the local planning appeal trib- trib- tribunal.
Thank you. Uh, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And next we have the natural gas agreement for the LAS, our, our association that helps, uh, get discounts for municipalities, uh, councillor Accioni and a seconder. We'll go with, uh, councillor Lauder. Thank you.
Yes, moved by myself, the Woodstock City Council refer the report regarding the 2021 LAS natural gas agreement to the bylaws section of the agenda.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. Uh, and this next one, uh, you'll remember the delegation that we had, uh, come to council regarding, uh, neighbors sharing, uh, the location for their recycling. Um, so this one, the Friendly Neighbor Shared Collection Stop Program, councillor Schadenberg and a seconder councillor Accioni.
Yeah, I make a motion that Woodstock City Council approves staff to manage a shared collection stop program. And further that staff be directed to report back to council regarding the success of the program in January of 2022.
Thank you. Discussion? Councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, from our works department through the mayor to a Taylor Crinklaw from, from Public Works, just a, a generic basic explanation as to uh, what, what we'd like to see here, especially from the delegation we had last year at council.
Yeah, through the mayor to the councillor's question there. Uh, the intent of the proposed program, um, is to effectively reduce the number of stops, uh, that our collection staff do on a given day, uh, with the intent to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Um, if this program, uh, were to be fully effective sometime down the road, you'd be looking at, uh, 14,000 stops that could potentially be cut down to half, so 7,000 stops. So the idea is a good one and there could be some, some savings from our department in terms of fuel savings as well as staff time. So, yeah, it's worth looking into.
Thank you. Further discussion? Uh, we'll go councillor Accioni next.
Yeah, just more of a general statement, really, just, uh, thanking the resident actually to bring that forward. Uh, my previous address, our neighbors, we used to do that together anyways. So I encourage, uh, everyone to talk to your neighbors and if, if you get along, try to set something up between yous. And I really think this, uh, could help not only in the environment, but costs and everything else. So it's a win-win for everybody. So, thank you.
Might help the brake pads last a little longer too on those big trucks. Uh, further discussion councillor Schadenberg?
It's more of a thank you. Anything else? I want to thank our, our public works, Taylor Crinklaw for, for passing along the report to members of the Environment Advisory Committee too, because we discussed it at at our previous meeting and then he passed it along to us before, before our meeting here on this afternoon. So, uh, thank him for that, for giving us the opportunity to kind of read the report ahead of time.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carry. So we'll hear about that again, uh, a year from now. Uh, next up is the stockroom storage system for our mechanic, uh, councillor Talbot and a seconder councillor Accioni.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council waive the tendering requirements for the procurement of goods and services by law for the purchase of shelving units from metric storage systems at a total cost of $54,578 exclusive of HST.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And next up, uh, let's see, we have no notices of motion or new business, so the bylaws, uh, councillor Lauder?
Is it, is it not Mark that does this? Sorry?
Well, we've got one in there where he's got a
Oh, I have, okay, sorry about that, just a minute, which one is, uh? Okay, the taxi, okay.
All right. And I'll ask who would be a seconder on this one. Uh, we'll go councillor Accioni. Thank you. Go ahead, councillor Lauder, sorry to catch you off guard.
Yeah, I'll move that the following bylaws be given a just, yeah, uh, I moved that the following bylaws be given a first and second rating. 9432 dash 21, a bylaw to authorize execution of the natural gas appointment and retainer agreement between local authority services and the corporation of the city of, of Woodstock. 9433 dash 21, a bylaw to amend traffic bylaw 8021 dash O4 is amended. A bylaw 9434 dash 21, a bylaw to amend municipal code chapter 643 taxi limousine. 9435 dash 21, a bylaw to provide for the dedication and naming of parts of highways in the city of Woodstock. 9436 dash 21, a bylaw to authorize the mayor and director of administrative services to sign the letter of agreement for the transfer of dedicated gas tax funds for public transportation program. 9437 dash 21, a bylaw to provide for the purchase of certain lands owned by Houston Zabian in the city of Woodstock, the seller.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. Councillor Lauder?
Uh, moved by myself and seconded by councillor Talbot that the following bylaws be given a third and final rating. 9432 dash 21 through 9437 dash 21 inclusive.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries. And, uh, today we'll start with, uh, to my right on the screen, we'll go with councillor Talbot.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, first of all, I just want to mention about the coldest night of the year walk that's coming up on February 20th. Um, there is quite a few teams that are registered. Um, one in particular reached out, which was the police team. Um, the funds will be going to the Inn of Oxford County, which is a short-term emergency shelter to accom- and it's for accommodation for people who are homeless or in a crisis. So it's for a very good cause. So, um, if you go on the website, you can see the different teams that are out there and sponsor. Whoever you want to. Um, I just wanted to, um, also offer, uh, sincere condolences to the Zabian family and the passing of Zabian Zabian. Um, he was kind of one of those figures downtown that you always saw, um, uh, walking around and going from place to place and, um, always the friendly person when you went into Zabian's Vins where, um, he, and he also was at the Starlight Variety. He was, um, just a very nice person and, um, people loved going into the store and, uh, having him wait on him. And, um, I think he always, um, had quite a few good deals for people and, um, they always came out looking, uh, very smart. So it's going to be a real absence in the downtown community for sure. And to all of you today, um, I, as you're aware, I traveled outside of the country at a time when Canadians were being asked to avoid non-essential travel. This was an error in my judgment and it betrayed the trust placed in me and my role as a city councillor. I can only offer my sincerest apologies and heartfelt regrets for a poor choice and commit to redoubling my efforts to regain. and commit to redoubling my efforts to regain your trust. I enjoy serving my community and being a strong voice for the people of Woodstock. My resolve to listen to and speak for this community has never been stronger and I will work tirelessly to continue to be an effective voice at the city and county table. To those who have offered their kindness for this very difficult time, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. It has certainly been a painful learning experience and one that I won't soon forget. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, when you mentioned about Zabian Zabian's passing, today, of course, my outfit that I'm wearing, much like most days, I got a really good deal. I might not have known exactly how much that deal was until it was already hemmed and ready to go. But I'll, I'll always remember those interactions very fondly. Councillor Acioli?
Thank you, your worship. I too, I don't think I own a suit from anywhere else, truthfully. So rest in peace, Zabian, you will certainly be missed. Just, just bumping into him anytime, running down to the bank or even City Hall, if I happen to be coming out. Always, always a pleasure to talk with and just, just so sad, actually, I was very disappointed. And it kind of is amazing how somebody that you just kind of interact with occasionally can affect it that much. So rest in peace, Zabian, you will be missed. And my thoughts and prayers to the entire Zabian family. For I know you lost a valuable family member and the community lost a good leader here for the city of Woodstock. So rest in peace. Family Day, speaking of kind of thinking about things this past year, it's no secret has been a tough one. It's been challenging for everybody. This family day, just think of what's we all have and how important family truly is. You've got to spend a lot of time, good or bad, with, with family and kids while school. But now that schools are back in and everything else, just, just remember how lucky we are and here in Canada, even in Oxford County during this pandemic, we have been fortunate. So it just, let's, hopefully we have the light at the end of the tunnel and be safe and keep wearing your mask and keep washing, keep space and, you know, stay, stay in, in bubbles as much as you possibly can and just be safe, everybody. And on the restaurant pop-up, I'm really happy to hear this. Let's just continue to shop local as much as we can. Just, they need our support. We're the first ones to them. You know, I've been involved with so many things over the years. We go to them looking for support for different fundraisers, things like that, and they always come through. This is really our time now to help those local businesses. Things have been going on so long now, I know a lot of them are, are, some of them have already failed, unfortunately. Let's just do what we can. And I think this is such a small thing to do as, as us as city councillors to, you know, bend, bend our normal rules to allow them to operate within a structure that hopefully can be at least profitable and keep people employed. So again, stay safe, everybody, and we will get through this. Take care.
Thank you. Councillor Lauder?
Thank you. The Woodstock Art Gallery and Toyota Motor Manufacturing Canada are teaming up to inspire and encourage families to get creative at home with a free grab bag of art supplies. The grab bag is, is jam packed with supplies including sketchbooks, paper, pencils, crayons and other fun craft materials. The grab bags will be available for curbside pickup outside the Woodstock Art Gallery, four forty-nine Dundas Street, Friday, February the twelfth, eleven AM to one PM and Saturday, February thirteenth, beginning at ten AM. Please remember to wear a mask and maintain physical distance. And this will be something for the children to do and the family to do. And thank you to Toyota Motor Manufacturing Canada for participating in this. And I wish to send my sincere condolences to the Zabian family. You certainly will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Schadenberg?
First thing I'd like to do is publicly thank Darren Hall's. He's the manager of the community complex, of course, arena facilities in the city of Woodstock, but therefore also covers the Civic Centre Arena. Yesterday morning, he joined me and a couple of members of our Recreation Advisory Committee to give us sort of the full extensive tour of the Civic Centre Arena. It's been somewhat in the news through Craft Hockeyville. But with our record Recreation Needs Assessment Study being planned for this year, I thought it was also important to be able to go through and not only see the ice surface because I know what the size of it, but really see the dressing rooms and the facility obviously is closed right now because of COVID nineteen, so there's no ice in there or anything like that. It was a good opportunity to see everything from the concession stands to all the public facilities and, and meeting room for the Wildcats, et cetera, et cetera, to get a good idea of the state of that building with the needs assessment study going on this year. And we have a coming Recreation Advisory Committee meeting that's coming Monday. So I invited a couple of Recreation Advisory Committee members to join us as well. So I wanted to thank Darren Hall for conducting an extensive tour for us. And, and as everyone else has stated, certainly sincere condolences to the, to the Zabian family here today. With great loss to the downtown of the city of Woodstock. You always see comments again on social media about creating the strength and pillars of downtown, but he was certainly one of them and to lose one of them is certainly sad news indeed.
Thank you. And councillor Tate?
Just a couple of things today. Hopefully we are out of lockdown coming up shortly. Keep our fingers crossed. I'm sure all those stores and the restaurants will be thankful. I just want to remind everybody, as councillor Acioli does, please get takeout if possible, whenever, support local. I know councillor Acioli always posts when he does, which is very helpful. And I'm sure they appreciate it. And I just would like to pass on condolences to the Streef family. If you've eaten any potatoes ever in your life, I'm sure they, I'm sure they would have come from the Streef farm. Mrs. Streef passed away last week, ninety-nine. She was amazing woman, five boys. They still run the family farms, a great family, they're big contributors to the community, always big with the chamber and supporting a lot of activities in town. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And of course, many have already heard about the prognostication from our six-foot-tall rodent Chili Charlie. Thanks to the Southgate Center for their nineteen years of that annual event. And of course, Hard FM for helping sponsor that. I was able to be present and of course, unlike some of the other groundhogs that people listen to, our Chili Charlie did see his shadow, which means wear some wool socks, have your tuchin scarf and long johns ready, six more weeks of winter. But a good reminder to everybody, we are so blessed here in the friendly city with extensive parks and trail network. So lots of opportunity to bundle up, take thermos of hot chocolate with you, go for a hike, enjoy some fresh air and sunshine with your family and make the most of the remaining weeks of winter. A reminder to the public, our next regular council session is on Thursday, the eighteenth, and we'll be starting into the revenue fund budget. And we'll follow that up with some special budget meetings on Tuesday, February twenty-third and the twenty-fifth. And so looking forward to seeing what staff is preparing for the levels of service. And I know that it's a big undertaking and council will be getting into the details very soon. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. And we'll go with councillor Schadenberg, seconded by councillor Lauder. All those in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you very.